We appreciate everyone's patience. I'm trying to get it sorted out. Thanks for getting this done a little bit late. So again, thank you, but we are going to start our march. Word of education meeting. And as always, I'd like to ask Bobby Kay if he would. We always have a moment of silence, so if you would, I'd like to ask one to stand.
At this time, I started a couple years ago. We have veterans scattered throughout this country and around the world. There are harms way at all times. Some of us, being veterans, I just think it appropriate that we take a few minutes of bold silence to pray for them or whatever, to get them safely back home. So it's a good fire hit. May standing.
Mr. Jenner, you will introduce. I think we have the privilege to have some young children. It's going to happen with our place of leisure. So if you'd tell us who we have here tonight, please.
Our middle school students, Ms. Davis Maddox.
I want to introduce Emily Frye to eighth graders. She's our musical SBA graduate. And she's going to introduce you to our Kevin Burke.
I'm a student of 12 years, Joel Markey. Benjamin Miller, Abby Alera, Katie McCollum, and Alexis Stewart.
Sorry, do you have a ring standing? And you guys come on up. And everyone, just give a question, please.
They're going to go back there. We're actually in Mary Street making a run up. So we'll see. I'll be like a kid. Everyone wants to see you. There you go. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you, John. If you can hear us in the back row, if you're ready for hand, we'll try to raise our voice level. We're a little bit bigger area than normal. So I've never been accused of my voice not being heard, but just in case, that'll be fine. First, I would like to ask approval for minutes from our meeting from February 25th. All the board members had a chance to review that. Are there any questions, additions, deletions?
Which motion we approve?
A motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
In your votes. So moves. Next on our agenda, for those that have been with before, is what we call our spotlight on people's programs. And I don't know that we have any tonight, so I can't do it.
No, Mr. Chairman. We normally do the utilities awards for saving the utilities, but it's not that we went up so high. But they changed the billing cycle on us, and so we didn't win. And our meeting is early this month, so we'll catch it back up in April with a couple months off too. But we just didn't have enough bills to look at this time.
Next is our section we call our public comment. Do we have anybody sign up? Again, what I'll do is I'll call the people that are here. After we have two, after those again, I'll invite anyone here that wants to address the board. That's what we're here for. So don't run away saying, just called, let me put my name down, I can't. So please feel free. And first is one of our friends, Mr. Gibbs.
I'd like to defer to my student body president, if I could, and let him go first, and I'll go after him.
Okay, so is this Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just want to have you first, before I put you down. Royal. Okay.
And these are other MEC students.
Hello. Yeah. Thank you. You're taller than I am. Good evening. My name is Val Martinez, and I am the student council president at MEC. And on behalf of Macon Early College, I would like to show our gratitude to the board by saying thank you for continuing to provide the students of Macon County an opportunity to get a head start on their academic future. So again, thank you. It really does mean a lot. That is it.
And all, all right. Who else do we have?
I'm Isaac Roots.
I'm David Marcus.
Okay.
Jake Hough.
Okay.
Emily Rutter.
I'm George.
I'm assuming y'all have endorsed what your president just said, if I correct.
Yes, sir. What year are you in Macon, Earl?
Third year.
And there's you.
Second year.
Third year.
Third year.
First year.
First year. New year. Well, thank y'all for coming. It takes a lot of courage to stand in front of people you don't know and talk about what you're thinking it's ours. So thank you. Ask the youngsters about.
Be careful, I'll make down the mountain.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you again. Okay.
Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Gibbs.
Okay, I'd like to use my microphone. First of all, I want to thank you also for keeping MEC in the budget for next school year. We obviously feel that MEC is worth a bit of financial hardship to keep it around. I would like to know for the Department of Education to consider leaving MEC in the budget every year without the threat of elimination of program. I know MEC is small, and we, being the county and the state, is in financial crisis and likely will be in a financial crisis this time next year as we prepare for the 14, 15 budget. But our parents and more importantly, our students have been focusing on this issue for the last three, four weeks. Their students have devoted time and energy to supporting MEC instead of the time and energy needed for the substantial college and high school course load. Midterms are this week, and they've been focusing on this issue instead of midterms. Again, I understand dollars and cents. I know that programs affecting the least amount of people are examined and bleak financial times. It is not fair to the students of MEC to annually be faced with the elimination of their program. Also, I invite any and all here to come, speak with me anytime to discuss the specific economic impact of MEC on the Macon County school system. We're not a traditional program. Thus, our funding and how we operate is non-traditional. Sometimes, really many times, it takes some, and this is for you now, more explaining of our program before it's understood. Again, thank you for continuing to support MEC. We, the MEC family, hope and pray for your continued support well into the future.
Thanks.
Yes, Dr. Hough.
Obviously, when we looked at all of those programs that we were expending dollars, I mean, I just bared it all and put as much out there. And the one thing, or at least where you've got some sustainability in some programs like Macon Early College, and that they are continuing to be supported by a state grant, I would encourage them and as well as the students and staff there to try to live within the means of that state grant as much as they possibly can. But saying that, there may come a time when the board has to look at that program overall if the state funding were to be gone, which when the state starts cutting, they show no mercy because they've already taken the million dollars away from us this year already. So the ability to sustain that program is based on evaluation, is based on the students and their progress, and those kind of things. And as long as those things are positive, then obviously you look at that as a positive kind of thing. But I think Mr. Gibbs knows, and the students know, that it's going to kind of be a battle every year, but they just have to keep working and doing the things that they don't have to do and do the best job they can with it. But anytime you're on a grant-funded program, there's a subject out there that says, we may lose it. And then what do we do? And the county is very, I mean, it doesn't just affect the students here. It affects Macon Early College, affects Southwestern Community College, it affects the county of Macon because they're the ones, for example, we don't do any maintenance of that building at all. All of that is under the county. So they have a vested interest in it as well as we do from a standpoint. So it's a county effort, and I would hope that that would go forward all the way through, even if funding were not available in the state, the county receives the backing of that program this time of year. So I mean, I know there are a lot of things going on in there, are there other schools? But they do know, you know, they have to be concerned about it. So thank you all for being here.
Mr. Chairman, why, the president's question?
Sure.
The grant, is it a yearly grant or is it a quarterly?
It's awarded yearly.
And you have to have it here?
We're in our set of year of operations.
There's no expiration happening, you should do it?
No, no, not that I've heard, not that I've been able to.
And did you have a $300,000?
$300,000.
$300,000 comes into economic play at Macon County, that money is spent for the paying teachers?
It's spending a lot of things, from tax books. The students in our program do not pay for college tax books. It's paying some salaries, yes. It's also paying for material supplies, SEC builds Macon County schools for the college liaison, new schools project, awards is $300,000, the state does, I'm sorry, the General Assembly does, and new schools project will build us, Macon County schools, for part of $300,000 for staff development. So there's a new number, I think it's kind of that $300,000, which when I first came into the program, I thought, oh, we're going to do that easy. But we've had to work every year since I've been there, knowing that this financial cliff is coming, to make sure that the state within our means. I think Amy could probably provide numbers on how much local money is supported our program four years ago. And this year, when I have to turn during Christmas, we should be under with operating within the whole year under the $300,000.
That's all we have. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board for a little more? I'm used to saying, don't we? All right, thanks very much. Next on our agenda, we're moving into our section we call the consent agenda. This is where the board may have, would like to ask those, any questions that might have anyone here. I know I have one question on here, and anyone else does not. Do you have questions from anyone else on the board? Anything about the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, do you have any questions? If it's a personnel-related question?
It is not. I might call one of our employees off the spot in a second, because no idea, but I'm willing to.
I guess my concern was, as Mr. Collins talked about earlier, I think what we're going to be talking about, providing career status, combinationary status, to teachers. Is that something we should talk about in the second session to make sure we're all understanding?
Yes, and that item is only on there to reflect that, that your personnel record has transmitted that list that board is required to at least 30 days in advance of your action.
So our problem is, is it does not approve the list. It's just a preview so we can look it over. Next meeting would be when, if we follow up, we'll be given approval for that list. But we're not approved, it has part of the approval for the consent agenda. Answering questions?
Yes, because we have to make some hard decisions. We already made a delay by any career status.
Okay, next. Now, if we want to discuss anything about this, should we move this into our consent agenda? About the list?
No, sir. You already have a closed session that I think you're planning to have on personal issues.
Right.
If there are specific personnel issues that board needs to discuss, link that list at that time you can.
Okay.
What you cannot do is take any action as regards any recommendations on MEC at least 30 days.
30 days prior to that first. Yeah. Excellent. Mr. Huggery?
Sure.
I know you don't want to debate this. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You're asking us to approve on next year, is that right?
Yes, sir.
A year?
From now.
I'll make sure I'm asking, but you pay for this trip out of your sales, correct?
The fruit sales every year.
Right, and that was based on, as far as expenses to the system, there is not, correct?
No, sir.
That's what I want to make sure, but I'm reluctant to approve things for next year without clarifying that.
Right. Basically, I wanted to get approved for next year so we can start getting the fruit sale, you know, ready to go and start doing the regular fundraising now can go toward that trip, so we have plenty of time, the students have enough time to pay for that.
I want to throw some more, that is the case, at all expense to be paid for a job.
Yeah, the students' raise are on the front.
Correct.
Thank you for selling fruit.
I'm sorry. Sorry? We have fruit, fruit, donuts, car washes, all the stuff that will approve.
You wasn't, you was good, you.
No, donuts. They're actually the donuts that are, that are real size. They're whole grain, donuts. Whole grain. Get things back under control here.
Are there any other, any other committees, any other questions by the, by the board on our consent agenda? If not, very much to approve. Have a motion right here, second. I'm going to say, all in favor, same as I'm saying, aye. In your votes. So moves. Personnel. Mr. Moore, is there anything you need to give us an update on, please, sir?
Well, we have advertised the child nutrition director position that was in place for about eight to 10 days. We had an opportunity to look specifically online and see what we gained there. I feel like we're going to have a mini qualify candidate. It'll be a tough choice. Dr. Replace Miss Hells, she's done excellent job. E C bus safety assistant, that position has been interviewed. It did not make the timeline. It'll be on the next board agenda. We have initially conducted an youth principal, private high school, we haven't had a name for it.
And Ms. Hells, your last day with us is going to be.
Right.
All right, okay.
Let me express our, well, you can do it, but I just wanted to thank Ms. Hells for her service to Macon County school system and wish her well with her new position to the Department of Transportation. No. Right. We need that, but with Department of Food Service, Child Nutrition Services, which she is, still don't be in our region or area of this type thing, but just for me personally and the board chairman speaking, I know she wishes to do that. Thank you, Chairman, for all for, first of all, keeping us solid, no matter how hard that might be.
Chair, what I was going to say was, this will be my surprise, I didn't realize, I didn't hear. I would like to have recognized your time, I apologize for that, but it's not as hot as it is. I was shocked and saddened to hear. I will tell you, if I had been able to relieve this, totally, I would have called, ever hired you, given you very bad reverence. You've just been hoping that would sway their decision, but no, that's, I found it could be here, help is still in this region, and I guess we'll, I think we'll surrender, okay? That's the best of my statement. When I drove over, passed the board, I'm talking to Dr. said, thank you, what have you done? We watched you since you've been here in terms of programs, and I think one is to be envied about throughout, throughout our state. Okay, so we hope so, like I said, big shoes to fill, so thank you for everything you've done. Anyone else?
No, I tried to marry, but I'm already married, keep her around. Said I couldn't get on one knee, so she's helping with stuff. I tried all the good.
Anyway, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, great.
Moving on. Is that all, Mr. Moore, that you have? Just, okay. At least you can, man, I figured it was a little bit. Next on our agenda is our policy approval. First is our Cartuca J Elementary Handbook. Mr. Shepherd, you're here. You want to tell the board exactly what it is you're looking for?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the school board. Before I begin, just to update you, probably about four months ago, I had a PTO fundraiser approved, which is going to be determined, that'll be April 25th. It'll be with teachers, my, George Rhodes, Mike Dones. Cartuca J Handbook, I submitted it to Renee, and the only addition I made, because we do not put dates in it, and the changes to the medication policy will be sent home. The only change that I requested is the change in principal from Jan Gane to Raven Shepherd. You would not believe the amount of confusion that's created. I've had many parents come in, and I've addressed them, and they've asked me to speak to the boss, and I've tried to tell them I am the principal, and they said, no, it's in the handbook. And of course, I had to explain that she resigned August the 1st, so it's, there's been a few problems. That's the only change that I'm asking.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor? In your votes.
Thank you.
We can now recognize you.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Parry, Steve Franklin, the elementary fundraiser. I think I saw it earlier here, too.
What they want to do here is they want to sell those little smitten, those little smelly kinsels. They smell really good, kids really like them, and so they want to use to be able to have this little fundraiser, use money to buy science kits for their kids. And they're also going to pass a grant from money from academic foundation and PTO.
Another question I have, sure, it's all I have. This is not anything, children don't be going out.
No, it's right in the school building.
It may be in there, I'm sorry, it may be in there, I didn't see it, so.
No, it's right there in the building, and the teachers actually sell them. When they come, the kids come in in the morning, they have a little table set up, and then they just walk right there, the teachers are going to sell them.
I thought that was case, I didn't make sure.
I'll make a question to the fundraiser first, right?
All in favor, same as I'm saying, aye. All in votes. So moves. Next, I think I saw, Chris is here. We have three for Franklin High School. Chris, if you would, don't mind, just give us all three, and we'll approve all at the same time.
Being natural, I'm putting on a golf tournament, they've done it in the past. This is just to cover expenses. Drama is putting on a play, Once Upon a Mattress, and this is just a paper of the ticket process. And this is here for the blank one, Once Upon a Mattress is all about. And then.
I think you passed one of my board members, he said, this is G-bait.
Ms. Werson, with her eco club, they're having an eco film fest at the high school, and she would like to sell some t-shirts to help raise, help raise some funds to cover expenses for that club as well.
I'm hoping to say, all in favor, same as I'm saying, aye. All in votes. So moves. Next, I think I saw, Chris is here. We have three for Franklin High School. Chris, if you would, don't mind, just give us all three, and we'll approve all at the same time.
Being natural, I'm putting on a golf tournament, they've done it in the past. This is just to cover expenses. Drama is putting on a play, Once Upon a Mattress, and this is just a paper of the ticket process. And this is here for the blank one, Once Upon a Mattress is all about. And then.
I think you passed one of my board members, he said, this is G-bait.
Ms. Werson, with her eco club, they're having an eco film fest at the high school, and she would like to sell some t-shirts to help raise, help raise some funds to cover expenses for that club as well.
I'm hoping to say, all in favor, same as I'm saying, aye. All in votes. So moves. I'm hoping to say, all in favor, same as I'm saying, aye. All in votes. So moves. Next, I think I saw, Chris is here. We have three for Franklin High School. Chris, if you would, don't mind, just give us all three, and we'll approve all at the same time.
Being natural, I'm putting on a golf tournament, they've done it in the past. This is just to cover expenses. Drama is putting on a play, Once Upon a Mattress, and this is just a paper of the ticket process. And this is here for the blank one, Once Upon a Mattress is all about. And then.
I think you passed one of my board members, he said, this is G-bait.
Ms. Werson, with her eco club, they're having an eco film fest at the high school, and she would like to sell some t-shirts to help raise, help raise some funds to cover expenses for that club as well.
I'm hoping to say, all in favor, same as I'm saying, aye. All in votes. So moves. Next, I think I saw, Chris is here. We have three for Franklin High School. Chris, if you would, don't mind, just give us all three, and we'll approve all at the same time.
Being natural, I'm putting on a golf tournament, they've done it in the past. This is just to cover expenses. Drama is putting on a play, Once Upon a Mattress, and this is just a paper of the ticket process. And this is here for the blank one, Once Upon a Mattress is all about. And then.
I think you passed one of my board members, he said, this is G-bait.
Ms. Werson, with her eco club, they're having an eco film fest at the high school, and she would like to sell some t-shirts to help raise, help raise some funds to cover expenses for that club as well.
I'm hoping to say, all in favor, same as I'm saying, aye. All in votes. So moves. A I G contract revision. Paul?
Yes, we, you all approved a contract with Ms. Wolfert, who helped with our A I G program for, I think it was up to 20 hours a week, and she's averaging about 25 hours a week. Since Ms. Bayton, she's picking up some coordination responsibilities, and she's telling me I have to do it all, too. Same as, she's my father.
I'll make a question to her first.
I'm hoping to say, all in favor, same as I'm saying, aye. All in votes. So moves. Ms. Hells?
It's that time of year, and I'm just trying to tie things up for the next person.
Before you bail off.
Right. So the meal price increases, the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act, which was the reauthorization of child nutrition program, if you'll remember, every year, we have to evaluate what the paid meal prices are, and if they are underneath a certain level, then we have to raise them. And basically, if we were not charging $2.59, which we are not, then the meal prices have to go up to the paid customers. Or the school board can make up the difference, which I'm presuming that that's not an option to give her budget situation. So they have a handy calculator that U S P A sends out to us and has us put in figures as to how many lunches you serve at this price, and how many lunches you serve at that price, and how many lunches you're going to serve next year at each one of those prices to ensure that you are raising the prices enough to be, their goal is a minimum of 10 cents per year, okay? So when I sat down to do the meal price projected increases for next year, what I was able to manipulate, excuse me, work out in the calculation, was that the secondary meal price will go up a dime from 235 to 245, but the elementary need only go up a nickel from 220 to 225. So that was the fairest way that I could figure out to work it out. And then Mountain Dew, we tried them over in the elementary group side, and if their participations now, those kids are in that five, six age range, or just start to get a little finicky, and they need second entree and second hors d'oeuvres, so we'll push it back up over into the second, the secondary group.
Chair, this is, can we anticipate another similar kind of thing next year?
I think you're going to be chasing that for many years, because every year, the reimbursement rate increases what we get for reimbursement, federal reimbursement. So right now, it's sitting at 259 is what you need to be charging. So if we go up 235 to 245, well, then the next year, that reimbursement rate will go up a certain amount. It's a big, long federal calculation. But say it goes from 259 to 265, you're still going to be chasing that, you're under the 265, and you'll have to go up by a dime a year until your paying meal prices equal the federal reimbursement rate. So they've given us a calculator because it's that complicated, leave it to the government to put the numbers in so that we're minimizing as little as we can. And it just, it just worked out that the average was under when I just did the elementary number versus the secondary number. So that's the least impact to our paying customers, which we need. And we don't want cafeteria to become a place for the frequent use children only. So we're going to take it up as slowly as we possibly can. And you know, every year, meal prices go up, our food costs go up, nothing goes down. So it's just a dime for the secondary, and it'll be an increase for elementary.
Well, I appreciate, a lot of the, just general public has really no idea what we're dealing with, with the federal government and the United States Department of Agriculture and all the regulations that change every single day of the week and month. And at some point, you know, I guess we just have to, I don't know what we go about it, but we could have come to you and said, we need a 25% increase, and, but we also know that when you go up on anything, the price of participation tends to go down.
Yes.
And so it's a very difficult process in order to, to increase the price to be within the federal guidelines, but not to increase it so much that it appears to be that we're trying to, and all we're trying to do is to break even.
Yes.
I mean, we can't, we like to make some money in there, and the only way that we're able to do that is to save a little bit because they need new equipment. They replace something that's 25 years old, that's not working anymore. At this point, the school board is not, and they'll make up those differences. Thank goodness this year, we're not being asked that all. But I commend Chair and our staff, our staff, because in some places, they just go in and say, we're going up 25 cents this year. Nobody seems to know why, and you still won't know why we're going up 10. But we do have to, because that limit keeps going up, and the more it goes up, we'll be back here again. So if some of the people say, oh, you're going up on food prices, you know, well, I don't know when the last time they bought something at the store, but yeah, I mean,[1211.12] And of course, I had to explain that she resigned August the first. So it's, uh, there's been a few problems. That's the only change that I'm asking.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? So move.
Thank you.
We can now recognize you. Mrs. Park, Steve Franklin, the elementary fundraiser. I think I saw it earlier here too.
Uh, what they want to do here is they want to sell those little smitten. Their little smelly kinsels. They smell really good. Kids really like them. And so they want to use to be able to have this little fundraiser to use money to buy science kids. And they're also going to pass a grant from money from academic foundation and PCL.
Another question in the House, I was all of that. This is not anything children don't be going out.
No, it's right in the school building.
It may be in there. I'm sorry. It may be in there. I didn't see it. So it'll be in the school building.
It's right there in the building and the teachers actually sell them when they come. Kids come in in the morning and they have a little table set up.
Right.
And then they just bunk right there and the teachers are going to sell them.
I thought this case, I didn't make sure. Okay. I motion to approve. Oh, your second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? So move. Next, uh, I think I saw, Chris is here. We have three for Franklin High School. Chris, if you would, don't mind. Just give us all three and we'll approve all at the same time.
Being natural is, I'm putting on a golf term that goes in the past. Uh, this is just to cover expenses. Drama is, uh, putting on a play, Once Upon a Mattress. And, uh, this is just a, uh, paper of the, uh, ticket process. And this, uh, this is here for the blank one. Once Upon a Mattress is all about.
And then. My board members have said this is G-bait.
Ms. Werson with her, uh, eco club. They're having a, an eco film fest at, at the high school. And she would like to sell some t-shirts to, uh, help some raise, help, help raise some funds to cover expenses for that club as well.
Thank you. I'm hoping to say all in favor. Say aye. All opposed? So move. If I can't. Ms. Justin, I want to tell you all I've heard nothing but good things about your mystery dinner theater, by the way. Everyone I talked to said it was, it was a top-notch performance. So y'all will be commended for, uh, being honest.
We are hoping to make that into an annual event.
Okay.
Just as a point of information between the dance team and the drama department at Franklin High School. We were able to raise upwards of, um, fourteen hundred dollars.
Great.
So it's a great fundraiser. Thank you for the board for allowing us to be at the center.
Mr. Jenner.
There you are.
Holland Schools. I think you have two.
Yes, there's both freshman class fundraisers. Freshman class, maybe the whole, whole of the high school. We're making the pieces here. So this, uh, this is cash and, you know, the, um, sponsors of the freshman class. And then the teachers will come and pick them up. Take them to their March Madness party.
Make a motion to approve.
I'm hoping to approve the second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Uh, AIG contract revision. Paul.
Yes, um, we, you, you all approved the contract with Miss Wolfert who helped with our AIG program for, um, I think it was up to twenty hours a week. And she's averaging about twenty-five hours a week since Miss Bayman retired. She's picking up some, um, coordination responsibilities. And then she's telling me how to do it all too.
But, but.
Same as, she's my father.
I make a motion to approve.
I'm motioning here second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So move. Ms. Hale.
The, um, it's, it's that time of year and I, I just am trying to tie things up for the next person.
Before you bail off.
Right. So the, uh, but the meal price increases, um, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, which was the reauthorization of child nutrition program. If you'll remember, every year we have to evaluate what the paid meal prices are. And if they are underneath a certain level, then we need to have to raise them. Basically, if we were not charging two dollars and fifty-nine cents, which we are not, then the meal prices have to go up, um, to the paid customers. Or the school board can, uh, make up the difference, which I'm presuming that that's not an option either, a budget situation. So, um, they have a handy, handy calculator that USPA sends out to us and has us put in figures as to how many lunches you serve at this price and how many lunches you serve at that price and how many lunches you're going to serve next year at each one of those prices to ensure that you are raising the prices enough to be, uh, their, their goal is a minimum of ten cents per year. Okay? So when I sat down to do the meal price, uh, projected increases for next year, what I was able to manipulate, excuse me, work out in the calculation was that the, uh, secondary meal price will go up a dime from two thirty-five to two forty-five. But the elementary need only go up a nickel from two twenty to two twenty-five. So, um, that was the, the fairest way that I could figure out to, uh, to work it out. And then Mountain Dew, we tried them over in the elementary group side and if their participations now, those kids are in that five, six age range or just, um, starting to get a little finicky and they need the second entree and, uh, second hors d'oeuvres. So we'll push it back up over into, into the second, um, the secondary group.
Cherry, this, uh, is, can we anticipate another similar kind of thing next year?
You, I think you're going to be chasing that for many years. Cause every year the reimbursement rate, um, increases what we get for reimbursement, uh, federal reimbursement. So right now it's sitting at two fifty-nine is what you need to be charging. So if we go up two thirty-five to two forty-five, well, then the next year that reimbursement rate will go up a certain amount. It's a big, long federal calculation. But say it goes from two fifty-nine to two sixty-five. You're still going to be chasing that. You're under the two sixty-five and then you'll have to go up by a dime a year until your paying meal prices equal the federal reimbursement rate. So, um, they've given us a calculator because it's that complicated. Leave it to the government, um, to put the numbers in so that we're minimizing, um, as little as we can. And it just, it just worked out that the average was under when I just did the, um, elementary number versus the secondary number. So that's the least, um, impact to our paying customers, which we need. And we don't want cafeteria to become a place for a free, reduced children only. So, um, we're going to take it up as slowly as we possibly can. And, you know, every year meal prices go up, our food costs go up, nothing goes down. Um, so, uh, it's just a dime for the secondary. It'll be an increase for elementary.
Well, I appreciate, uh, a lot of the, just general public has really got a idea of what we're dealing with. With the federal government and the United States Department of Agriculture and all the regulations that change every single day of the week and month. And at some point, you know, I guess we just have to, I don't know what we go about it, but we could have come to you and said, we need a twenty-five percent increase. But we also know that when you go up on anything, the price of participation tends to go down.
Yes.
And so it's a very difficult process in order to, to increase the price to be within the federal guidelines, but not to increase it so much that it appears to be that we're trying to, and all we're trying to do is to break even.
Yes.
I mean, we can't, uh, you, we'd like to make some money in there and the only way that we're able to do that is to save a little bit because they need new equipment. They would place something that's twenty-five years old. It's not working anymore. At this point, the school board is not, and they'll make up those differences. Thank goodness this year we're not being asked that off. But I commend Cherry or staff, or staff because in some places they just go in and say, we're going up twenty-five cents this year. Nobody seems to know why. And you still won't know why we're going up ten. But we do have to because that limit keeps going up. And the more it goes up, we'll be back here again. So if some of the people say, oh, you're going up on food prices, you know, well, I don't know when the last time they bought something at the store. But, um, yeah, I mean, you know, price of milk is pretty high. And everything else is too.
I think what a lot of parents have done, look at what they could, if they can't pack that lunch for that, um, one that was, that's nutritious with fruits and vegetables and milk and so forth. So, um, anyhow. We have to take it up because we, that the only other choice is that the school board supplement those increases. And we don't want to get into that because we don't have the money for that either. So, uh, it'll be a dime for secondary and a nickel for elementary.
Right. And that, and that's good. Now, if the board approves that, the board would approve that. Considering we could approve that tonight, or will we need to wait?
Thank you. You approve it tonight, Cherry?
I, I will approve it tonight since I have someone placed by next month. They could just go ahead and.
Well, and the reason I say that is because as, as the schools begin to get their handbooks ready and information and they have, we have kindergarten meetings coming up starting early April. So we'll be able to, uh, let people know exactly what to plan on, uh, for their food service for next year. So.
That'd be great.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The adults will go up and down. Was that, I don't know how much that got paid you?
Well, the adult meal price is three fifty.
Right.
And, uh, we still have complaints from adults about that price, by the way. Uh, but it's three fifty and it includes an entree and, uh, three sides and a beverage. Um, and the adult meal price, uh, is evaluated in the summertime when the auditors come through to see if, if we're breaking even or not. And we only take it up if we have to. So at this point, we, we assume it stays the same, but at some point that also will have to go up. But we let the auditors do any questions. We don't want to cost our teachers any more.
I make a motion to approve for ten cents, I mean, five cents, um, increase in lunches.
Second. I'm motioning second. All in favor? Do they have any questions? Is Gary here? I keep talking out there, so.
Yeah, everybody okay?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So move.
Thank you, Cherry.
Social networking policy. This is our second reading. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Chairman, this is the board's second reading of policy. I have no suggestions for changes from the first grant. Well, it's not the first grant. Uh, it's multiple grants, but this was done in collaboration with our local NCAD, state NCAD, or, uh, principals of the state. So we feel like this is a good one.
And I did not ask questions the last time, so I didn't have any questions. So let's say there is a teacher, um, thank, let's just say they were. She didn't allow to be friends with students.
We don't specifically prevent that in college?
Because, okay, that's what I think.
And the reason, what we're trying to distinguish is between professional relationship and non-professional relationship. In the course of a professional relationship, what I'm looking at, school-sponsored sites, sports-themed sites where interactions may be occurring, that is allowable. We don't want to get into the area where we're I don't like to use words like friending because that term will be fastated in six months. We will maintain professional relationships. That's the best way that I can.
Because a lot of our, a lot of our teachers are friends with, you know, the other teachers and their kids are their friends. It's just, it's not even, it's not even in the professional contact. A lot of it is, these are the people that they are going to church with. They're friends with and including myself. There's logic people.
And what we're trying to get at is the same way that you, you would expect that teacher to be as, an actual, in real life friend with, with, you know, with others and expect them to be professional and all times. This is to say you're expecting to do that with your online interaction with people as well.
I'm just, they asked me some specific ones. I said I would have to clarify because I would have to stroke that.
Absolutely. I believe the second bullet, uh, that same terms at one time, she called it, I believe the second bullet. It cleared it up in my head. I'm sure she's written mine up. It cleared it up in my head in the second bullet.
Yes.
About your academic math book.
Any other questions?
I think it answers the question, sir.
No, the board doesn't have any questions about the policy.
They have a motion to approve. So move. Have a motion approved. Your second. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So move.
Can we make a second?
Okay. Next on our agenda is the, uh, a resolution, I think, Mr. Moore, resolution in support of the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program.
Standing down. Stand back up. This is a resolution produced by the North Carolina Teaching Fellows. Ironically, I have five senior fellows here in the district this week. Uh, they're spending three days. Uh, the rectors have had an opportunity to meet them. Principals will have the opportunity to meet them. Part of their senior experience, they have to go to the district and stay for three days to learn more about the business operations. But aside from that, we feel like this is a very valuable program. This has been eliminated by the General Assembly last year. The group that are sophomores this year at this point in time are the last teaching fellows that will be part, that will be in the pipeline, so to speak, in North Carolina public colleges. We'd like to see this program continue. We feel like we have gained some very good teachers. I think it limits opportunities for some students that want the opportunity to go to college and become teachers. So with your permission, I would like the board to also support this, this group, the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program through this resolution. I'll answer any questions if you may, Andy.
The whole person said I was very distressed when I heard they were doing this. It's one of the best, in my opinion, one of the best programs out there.
The other legislatures came up with a different program that, um, made me miss.
Do you want to have any questions? Mr. Moore?
I'm motioning resolution to approve.
I have a motion, uh, and a second to approve the resolution as presented. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So move. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Did we talk about, talk about the other resolution that we, uh, you and I talked about in our email?
It's, we had a, I, I didn't put on the end of this time, but we had a resolution that was sent to us by the school board, um, association related to the bill of the General Assembly that will put all of the county schools', uh, property maintenance and everything under the county commissioners. It's, uh, it's an aggravation bill that's come out of Wake County because somebody has gotten, um, chapped about something. But I don't, our county commission is in no way supporting that they want to take over all of the, um, they have all the money, but we don't have any money. But when they fund projects, we have interlocal agreements. And apparently in some school systems, there's this big battle about who owns the school. The state law says that the school board and basically principals and staff of the schools are the ones that design in a way the schools. They have to have input into that. And in some counties, they don't need to make all of those decisions. Then they want the county to maintain those buildings. And so, uh, I will circulate that resolution, Mr. Shields, again. I didn't think at the time it was necessary because our county commission does not support it at all. But if we need to sign a resolution and send it to the school board association to help them, I see no problem in doing that.
Yeah, I think that's actually, I think that's what you were asking. I know here in our, in our community, as I said, we have a wonderful relationship with the commissioners. Kind of envy of a lot of other counties, by the way. But I think this would be appropriate. Yeah, this would be appropriate. This is sent down to, then support to not all those counties that are faced. I know Mecklenburg County, for example, is in a movement there to do exactly the same thing that they represented there. So, did everyone have a chance to read the request? I think we did. So I would, to the pleasure of the board, would I like to do at this point? The school board has asked us to approve this. Any other discussion? If not, uh, we have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. Very good.
We'll get that out.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Shields. Service agreement. Mr. Henny between Mecklenburg High School and Virtual Image Technology.
Mr. Chairman, that word document there on the screen is an agreement between the proposal for Mecklenburg High School and Virtual Image Technology. Some months ago, we, they recall, we had an issue that came to board's attention as to whether or how, you know, how exactly, uh, we would maintain records from Franklin High School, uh, as, as required to be by law. They, so this is a means of doing that. And as, uh, as specified on the first, uh, page, there, this, this company would take and maintain records really after students have graduated and, uh, or then, uh, we would have access to them on a sort of a has-been basis. Basically, my interaction with this, this situation has just been to review the contract, which is ten minutes and that's documented down. Well, there's the, the agreement and then this is the confidentiality agreement that they wanted to protect their confidentiality. I, I made sure and insisted that we add, you know, what's really important to us is the confidentiality student track. So that's, they didn't have any problem with that. It was added in. Um, and I don't know if Nancy really.
But that's, this is a company you, you've seen, have you not?
This is the company that's done a scanning, um, for, uh, records at Franklin High School, they also at Central Office. And we had to stop because of money. But they came up with another solution and that was that they, um, said that they could store our student permanent records for a very small amount of money. And because Franklin High School's run out of storage space, we were talking about storing it at Central Office, but Central Office doesn't have a whole lot of room either. So we kind of came up with this solution and Dr. Baldwin has said that we understand that, um, local money is not available, but he felt like he had enough general fund to replace the high school to support this. It's a small, um, fee every month. I think it's thirty-six dollars to restore those records. And then if we needed a record, we can call them and they would, um, scan that record and get it to a, in a timely manner. So, um, we felt like that would be the best solution for all of us. Dr. Duncan asked me to get in touch with, uh, the state of North Carolina and their archives, uh, records division. And I asked them to be sure that this was legal to be able to store records off-site. And they said that yes, it was, um, definitely legal. They insisted we do it. And just to be sure that we had certain things in the contract that we did.
My friend, I, I wouldn't in any way have this before you if I thought it was going to cost us one dime. So stop all of that if we can. But, uh, I probably just don't spend all the money over there right now because we may have to call on you again.
I think, well, and we can, we can manage this. We'll, hopefully, if those are approved, a few years, we'll be able to find those resources to take care of it.
Right. It is, it is a minimal cost and, and as long as Mr. Henny and Ms. Cantrell are satisfied. My concern was the, the archive records. I mean, we're, school records are, you know, home records are one thing. School records are another. And we have to be very careful about that. But as long as that's covered, um, then, uh, I'm for it. And we, and we encourage it. And, uh, but knowing that it is an ongoing, it is an ongoing cost. It, it is minimal at this point. And you know, at some point, if you can make it a part of your budget, I'm sure it would be fine to do that. But right now we just can't do that. But the high school can do it and clear out some space over there at least for the time being anyway. Now, Ms. Cantrell, this, is this available only to the high school or is it available to other schools?
Well, right now, um, he gave us a private quote just for Franklin High School. He's willing to do for other schools if, you know, if necessary. And try, he charges about lots how much it's, um, it costs to store. And so if, if this is approved, I mean, it's actually been from the law already and loaded up in technical way. Franklin High School will make it, I believe, the last seven years in their office, in the rest of the building.
Mr. Jenner, does, do you have a space problem with the records right now here?
Not yet.
Okay.
New buildings.
Right. I don't, I don't think that that is the issue at this point. If they do, then we'll, we'll look into that, that contract.
They will be getting pretty close to.
That's a, uh, request. Do I hear any other questions, Mr. Nancy? No, that's what they needed at our high school because those records take up the equipment. Which is a huge amount of space that they're, and they need access to. They have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion, the second we approved, uh, the, uh, service agreement. Any other questions? Not all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So move. Mr. Moore, athletic drug testing program cost analysis.
Yes, sir. Um, on the screen you'll see a comparison of three different companies that offer drug testing services. What we've been doing is, in the past with our athletic program, is purchasing the supplies for local diagnostics and conducting those tests in-house. You see that the cost of the product is seven ninety-five per unit. Thirty-seven dollar cost for confirmation of results. Last year in Lake County school system, county middle school and high school athletics retested a thousand one hundred and forty-four students. So that ended up being roughly, if you look under the second, it ended up roughly being ten thousand ninety-three dollars and eight cents. I've done some work trying to find other organizations. One is BIB. They do our background checks. I solicited, um, costs from them before and they're still prohibitive. We're looking at roughly twenty dollars and seventy-five cents for a DIB card, which is something a little different that we want to do. We use an integrated cup, split specimen model. If we use an integrated cup from BIB, it would dent the twenty-three dollars and fifty cents each. And that would include any confirmation, both those prices include confirmation. Well, if you use our data from last year, another test that we conducted, we're talking somewhere north of twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, give or take. So obviously that's out of the picture. We have a local company that invented drug testing services that has submitted a bid of eight dollars per test for confirmation, thirty dollars. And eight dollars is a nickel more than we're paying now based on the number of confirmations. Using last year's data, it'd actually be a little bit cheaper, some forty dollars or so. So I guess this information that I'm presenting to you is I have a lot of school system, myself, Coach Lamb, who conducts all of the drug tests here in Highlands. I think I speak with Coach Lamb saying that I'd like to get out the drug test business. I'd like the third party, independent party to conduct those. And with those prices, I think, I think it's something we need to say.
We, we've talked about that. As you know, Mr. Moore's, I've brought us a considerable amount of time. He has his assistant there. Uh, and that's the actual cost. We're not assessing any of the, the stay of time. And we've got some. And we've got someone who is willing to do it at a reasonable price. I think it would maybe be appropriate, Mr. Moore, to, for that person, for us to extend an offer to that person to enter into a contract with it, and that, just to be sure that there's not price increase during the year, or any of those kind of things. And getting that back, that maybe we can bring that back to you in the April meeting, with Mr. Henning looking over the contract, because when we turn it loose, we want to turn it loose for sure, we don't want to have to go pick it up, and we'd like to have it be, it's necessary, it should be done, but by the same token, I think when we do it with our own staff, we still need to get away from that as much as possible to give as much objectivity to it as we can. So, that's, would kind of be my hope, to certainly discuss whatever it is, this information right now, but we'll do whatever we please.
I think, I would think your regulation, our guidance, what we should do, put the contract based on how separate prices increases. John, you haven't had a chance to see the contract?
We don't have a contract yet, it's a just regular stage. We've not been to that stage, we have to tell you, I don't really do hard things.
Oh, yeah?
There is more than enough to do to keep your personnel record busy all day, without going out and putting this guy's...
Well, plus, this is another thing attached to this whole thing, I think we're well-served to look at, so. It's just for information purposes, and then hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have a contract, and we will proceed. Is that, does the board?
I just want to say that we had some questions about whether or not Mr. Moore was qualified with his drug test experience as well. Your support?
I, well, this is called integrated because it's a split specimen, you don't really want to, this is also integrated, but this whole specimen would be handled by, a DIP card is just exactly what you think it is, to determine the test. I've learned more about it than I ever wanted to know, and I'm willing now to share that knowledge.
Mr. Chairman, may I address Coach Lamb with a question about that?
Sure, Coach Lamb.
Coach Lamb, would that affect, you know, you do, the students, I know, we have a kind of different way that you do it, and every sport gets every child, and I ran in with somebody, would that affect any way that you are per from justice in our, I think?
If we had an outside person do it, it would be, I think, much better, just because of that, like you said, the objectivity, because, you know, it's hard to find, for me to find female staff members to test them, and I try not to let home coach, same four coaches do it, and we have had some discrepancies before, people come to me and say, you know, so-and-so went in there and peed for so-and-so, and, and I've tried, we've tried every way possible, but it would certainly help.
Are you still taking advantage from that, do you?
I don't think so. I think it all comes from Mr. Moore, because he, every time I need him, he's, he's the one that says, the amount of funds that we've received in the past is far fewer than nothing. It was forty-eight dollars a year, something along that. Wasn't quite forty-eight dollars to help us afford that. Yes, sir.
If you, I was going to leave this to Franklin High School, you do it in a random situation?
We do randoms at times, we're going to have to look at that, if we continue to do random tests, if we do, I'm not going to have to talk in this particular venue. I'm also going to have to look at the way the policy's written, because I'm fairly certain it says split in the policy. So, we may have a couple of tweaks there as well.
But you wouldn't be able to evaluate one-hundred percent if you do that.
Oh, yes, sir. We're not doing that now, Mr. Moore.
No, sir. I think what we're doing, we're doing everyone, at most, probably not, and then you also have random.
All three, all three high schools and the middle school, and the middle school here as well. We're every child, every sport season. That's the hundred percent. Now, you know, that, of course, Mr. Lamb takes care of all that, Coach Lamb takes care of all that here. I go with Lynn and do initial tests, if there's any makeup because of student absence, then I shoot the email, or Coach Bradley, mail through the email, make it up and make up, and the next day, the kid goes back to school.
Thank you.
Come back to us, I don't think there's going to be much opposition, you said, give us out of drug testing business.
I thank you for that, boy, and you will do it.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's what it's all about, we kicked that public figure over the end, because there's certain problems like seven, uh, per test. Mr. Moore?
Sir?
I think Mr. Shields may have a question.
Yes, sir. Okay. For one person, how much would it cost?
For one person, seven dollars and ninety-five.
Okay. If we do one-hundred percent, you look at all that, please, just the time, seven ninety-five?
One thousand one hundred and forty-four. I used last year's data for this comparison, and the amount of tests that we had to send away for confirmations, and I think, gosh, I must say, I had seventeen last year that were sent away for confirmation, which I made this report before, and it was, you know, at the end of the school year, let's see, it's at thirteen, I have seventeen for Franklin High, one for Manhattan Hills, eighteen, two for Highlands, it's twenty, seven for Megan Middle, so twenty-seven that we sent for confirmation. Now, they're going to the lab in Wisconsin. Spud X, it's overnight, it's surprising how quick you get the results back, actually. But this, I would use MedTalks, and MedTalks is the lab that actually does our bus driving. So, if there was confirmation, you go to that MedTalks, and their NTSB, I think, is the particular protocol that has to be followed with.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Drug testing. If not, we'll move on to curriculum instruction. There was a lot, I think Nancy and Carol had sent out this information, I'll be honest, it was a lot of information to look over, so, and I don't know if you have any questions, we may revisit this at the next meeting, if that's all right, if we have a chance to look at it, in case there's other questions come up. But at this point, Carol and Nancy, did you want to give us kind of an overview of what you're proposing and that?
Well, we, every school has to have a school group of players, and it has to improve the board. We do this every three years, so I figure it ran out, and we have to have a new one in place this year. The reason it's coming so late is that typically, your plans are based on your scores and how you want to improve them, but our scores are not going to be, just say, we won't be able to compare out of the hour. Our tests are different, our standards are different, probably the cup scores will be different, so if you scored an eighty-five in third grade reading last year, and wanted to increase it by five percent to ninety percent, and then you gave your reading scores back from this year, the chances are, they're probably going to be going down instead of up, because like I said, there's a new test with new standards. So, we had to get with all schools and look at a different way of measuring student performance and success. So, all schools, and Carol, they probably tried a different school. I think the only school that I work with right now is Franklin High School, they did something different. They decided to look at their climate, school climate, they felt like that was something that was interfering possibly with students being successful, so they wanted to see how they could make that climate positive, and that's what their schooling plan was based on. They did a survey of the students and teachers, and from that survey, they put into place some strategies in order to improve the student climate.
In the elementary schools, they set a two-year target, start with the first...
Carol, excuse me?
Yes.
Can I ask, are we going to pick?
All right, the elementary schools, they set, their start out as a two-year target, and then we took that target and set a one-year target from that two years out, because remember, their tests will change, so they really don't want that comparing this year. So, they had a two-year target, the next thing, they took that two-year target, divided it in half, and made a one-year target for this year, and they had to use the measures they had, and they used their reading 3D measures, which is the state reading assessment. It'll be all the reading that you see on there, except for fourth grade up, are state reading measures. And then, they used, in math, they used their A's web measures for grades K through eight. And some of the, you know, this is a working document for them, and you'll see some things that you'll see go down, the schools have, we've met with the principals with PLCs about how to work on that and how to improve, but we also have, the targets that they had were based on beginning of the year, moving to the end of the year. You'll see some discrepancies in that, you know, this is, this was a whole new assessment, parts of it was, so they had to start, we had to retrain some people. Well, the first time we gave it, it wasn't done exactly right, so mid-year, we corrected that, and so from the middle of the year to the end of the year, you should see good fidelity. And then the schools set up their, how they're going to carry that out, they've got a very succinct plan there, and they set up these steps, and who's going to measure things in their timeline, and basically, you know, we're just kind of having, we're on cycle two, so you'll see they looked beginning of the year to the middle of the year, and next time, they'll look the middle of the year to the end of the year, look overall, and see if they met that year target, so. And they're all pretty much the same, they all use kind of the same measures.
So, for example, you've got, like you say, efficient file two thousand twelve, that's what they're testing?
That's what they're assessing at, it's not a state test, it's their state reading assessment.
Okay, so you're saying it means assess that, and then on the next one, where you're setting efficient scoring two thousand fourteen, so what is that to conduct?
Okay, I need to probably look at what you're looking at.
Sure.
Okay, is this the first page? The very first one. Okay, that's their two years out, this is their two years out, the first page is. The second chart will be their one year out, which will be this year.
So, you're saying you're second five, so what if you are not using this continuing second? Carol, what would that have led to?
Well, they'll be able to take what they've done this year, and see whether they met their targets this year, because this is a one-year plan, now, if they, they change their targets, which they probably won't reading, because that's, remember, the reading three days from the state.
Right.
And then if they do something different, they'll have to redo their plan next year.
Okay, so you're saying the plan is just on the, on the sheet, it's just for the learning, it's what they're testing at, and, but again, it's based on A's web, so I don't know if that's not, I think I hear it's similar.
Well, that's now, because we don't have any state measures, you know, we don't have a state assessment, but yet we have to show data, so that's what they're using this year to show their data. And so, if they choose something else next year, we'll just have to start. They'll still have one year to see if they met their target, which the whole goal is to show growth.
Which, I guess, I guess that's not the song, because we're, I mean, I know, I have a strong version before, like, you know, this A's web doesn't show your growth in life, or after.
Well, it will by the end of the year, if the, and one thing it does is, the teachers have to teach.
But they do by the end of the year.
Because you're moving from beginning of the year to end of the year, if the children aren't growing, but see, the targets change each, each assessment period.
So, let me ask you this, so you're saying that if my child, or my child's at camp or starting beginning of the year and end of the year, can she show her growth? So, that's going to show their growth, right?
Well, it should show growth if we're, if she's working throughout the year and being taught.
Right. And I know she showed growth, or it didn't show growth, so I just concern to me, how accurate is it?
Well, it's as accurate as we have for the school to work towards the target, and it's not perfect, I've talked to that before, but that's as close as we got. You're, because you have to, in order for them to even tell if their kids are growing, they have to, they have to have something in there. And overall, we're, we grew pretty much in math by mid-year, and then we'll look at mid-year to end of the year, because it kind of gives the teachers an idea. If they haven't grown much from beginning to middle of the year, it's more an instructional thing with the teachers, the teachers can say, okay, our kids didn't get quite where they need to be, we need to bump up our teaching, or we need to match our teaching more to the core.
So, is school improvement plan, it's just for the teacher?
The school improvement plan's for the school.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's for the whole, it's for their, their growth, to, they set their targets where they're headed, and then they'll check, and it's been a good tool, I mean, I know Ms. Parks talked to me the other day about, you know, there was some good conversations with the teachers, because some of them saw some areas where they weren't moving, and they knew they had to bump up their teaching, or they had to, to do something different, so they started working on strategies for comprehension, you know, working with each other, and that helps them improve their instruction, whichever time that's going to help the kids, you know, so in long term, it's the kids that win, but it's just a target, you know, there's nothing, you know, there's no...
We all have a goal.
Yeah, it's a goal, I mean, it's not, it's not like there's any punitive, there's nothing punitive to it, if they don't reach it.
I'm sorry.
There's no punitive, punitive measures to it.
And the school monitors themselves.
Yeah.
You know, if they look at it and say, we don't like this, this strategy didn't work, or we don't even like this target goal, they can change it, it is the school.
And does the school, either the school choose what, how they're going to like test themselves, like, are the schools...
Like Highlands is doing something different, and we didn't get their school improvement plan in time to put on the agenda, but we did that next month, they're using different measures. Megan Middle will be using different, some different measures as well, especially for reading.
So, basically, they, they use your own measures, so they're trying to use something that they're comfortable with, and the school perfects it if you want it, choose the court that. Yeah, I just concern with, you know, you want it to be somewhere after, you just do, because it's, if you're using it, the teacher, student, who does, you want it to be somewhere after.
Well, in the, your, your state reading, your state reading stuff, that's, that's at our hands, but that's what they use for reading, the reading unit.
I fully agree, state reading's at our hands, but the A's web is not state reading.
No, no.
If I read it right, and what's going on, is every school's had a committee of teachers they've met.
They have to have teachers and parents and administrators.
What they've done is, every school's come together, and they've kind of formed their own...
They have their school improvement team.
...plan, and they're going to oversee that plan, and go, say, we're not adding any testing.
No, no, they just, they just write their plan to meet their goals, and what you'll see on some of them is, they chose to continue the approach they used from the beginning of the year. Two or three schools said, well, that didn't work as well as we thought it would, so they went in and added another step. They went in and said, okay, this cycle, we're going to do something different.
Can you, like, show me, can you show me this thing?
Yes.
Like, this was chosen.
Okay, like, they picked out measures that they were weak at, that they wanted to improve on, and so if that's where they want to improve how they've grown, like kindergarten or accounting moved from here, they wanted to go from thirty-eight percent from forty-two to forty-eight, and then mid-year, you can look at what they did, and you can see how far they've gone so far this year.
And they're just getting this data from something you're already doing, you're doing first, middle, tenth?
Right, it's, I hate to interrupt, but it's part of our benchmarks that we're doing, it's part of our RPIs, and, I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but I guess I will, the way it's been put to us is the A's web, which probably is best for Dicker, the new comment board that's coming out. Like Nancy said, it's kind of hard for us to compare last year's BOG... Uh, like Nancy said, it's kind of hard for us to, to compare last year's BOG to a new standard of BOG, when we take initiative for Common Core, and we have no idea what they are.
And so you're, so you're saying A's Web is the consensus of Common Core?
Well, that's the way it was presented to me. Uh, in, in my school, like Carol said, you know, we, we met with teachers, uh, we had parents, uh, school administrators, we decided to go with our A's Web for that. Uh, yes, ma'am. And of course, the state mandated, uh, the recent review. And then basically it gave us a baseline, and then we were able to look at areas where we were positive, negative, and then shoot for our curve.
So right here, like this school, kindergarten or counting improved from here to here. So they made nine percent improvement. And then this one, they did, um, first grade, they had that much improvement.
That's B O Y.
Yes, from beginning, B O Y means beginning of year. Now, remember, we didn't write this, they didn't write these necessarily for you, they wrote it themselves. So they understand B O Y and L O Y and E O Y. But there you can see what they've done. They've done some calculation to see if they're moving towards their target. And they have some really good data.
That's, that's part of what I was, again, sort of A's Web, but the, the often, teachers are allowed to change their assessment tools, as they usually do. If they, something better comes down, they start to change.
We try to keep it kind of Jim, try to keep it kind of the same, so that they, they're measuring apples to apples. So they don't, like, in the middle of the year, we wouldn't change.
But after one year, you can't do that.
Yeah, you can do that.
And you're just...
Yeah, we have a, we have a...
And I told people, if I were to, I would, I wish that we did have a school improvement
plan this year. I wish that we could just concentrate on, um, implementing the new standards of Common Core in our class. And that we, that's what everybody would be doing, but since the state says we have to do this, um, we, we try to make it so that it's useful. And, you know, this may totally change. When we get our scores back next year, we may throw this whole thing out and redo it again. We just don't know what's going to happen. But we're hoping that's the candidates, the measures that we've got. Um, every school improvement team, what I would tell them is, when you come together, pick two or three things that are, that you feel like you need, um, to improve in your school that are standing in the way of student success. It doesn't always have to be just math and reading, though most of us concentrate on that, I think, in Taiwan, we have to, maybe you have to at least do it once a, um, two or four seconds. But we're really looking at what is standing in the way of student success. So Frankel High School actually felt like one of their things at this point was the student partner, that they just needed to make that more positive and safe play for students. And that's true down. And, yeah, it's up to each team to admit that, that's a term they, we don't do that, or the state.
But we used to have school improvement plans that were forty-five long, and we just repeated everything the same year. Go ahead.
I have a meeting with principals down, um, from East Chicago State this weekend, and, well, I've been meeting with them, uh, like, once every two months. And, um, they were going to do the same, um, um, like they, like they...
In what measures?
The A's...
Yeah, there's a lot of other people, he's a lot of authentic at school, at the youth community schools in San Diego.
And the youth, I guess, every school does kind of choose how they want, what they want to use, um...
I know, I actually talked to the teachers in Anahala, and they told me that they had rather use A's Web than to try to learn something new. I mean, that was their high school level. Do you think that the school system should try something different? And they told me that they'd rather use it than to try to learn something, to start over, learn something new again.
Well, it's something to do with me, that A's Web, my teachers do not, like A's Web, do not have it, but and I know the parent, he does not give me correct information, not even close to correct information about my daughter. So I guess I'll represent my teachers the best that I can, because not, you want to approve it, like it, one hundred percent, as their representation, I'll just put the hat on, they do not have it.
We don't have hats here, will we have that next meeting?
You get Hollis, Union, um, Megan, and then Hillary. I think those are the four.
Will, will the board, I think we can, we can hold these approvals until we get that other information, or we can do these at this time, is that, is that right? So I'll leave it, I'll take this place of the board.
Take the motion to group, let yourself, you know, present.
I have a motion to group in a second. The other discussion.
Yeah, I, I don't hear all the things, but, not, oh, sorry. I'd like to take the other two, our office, like, something that's not usual, this, our heads up, to look at, rather than just somebody telling, you know, back to the back. But, uh, I feel like...
Let me address just a couple, man, I won't take much time, but, but, part of this has wrapped up in a, a challenge for, Dr. Baldwin, among other things, a, a challenge is to develop a new strategic plan for the system. As you mentioned that before, the strategic plan that you had actually ran out. This is the last year for it. But there's, but what is happening in the state is so much is being based upon the test scores at the end of the year. So we'll give all kind of tests coming up in May. If we're fortunate, we may get the results by October, maybe November. It has been as late as November in North Carolina before you get the test scores back. But that doesn't help anybody to start the school year. So what we're looking for is a measure that gives an assessment at the very beginning, that gives something at mid-year, and gives something at the end. We already have something at the end, that's the state testing. We already have a state requirement of something middle, beginning, middle, and end in reading, kindergarten through third grade. Now, the state is coming out with some assessment measures in mathematics. And as Walden said, that we're not committing any dollars to the A's Web program or any other assessment program at this particular time. But you, we're almost in a day where you have to periodically assess, that you can't just think, well, what I'm doing is okay, let's wait till the end to find out. Because if you have an assessment problem in fourth grade, and you don't know about that, quote, until October or November of the next year, you've got a fifth grade teacher that's been halfway through a semester without accurate data on their children. All they have is what they're able to do, um, you know, each, each day and each year. Yeah, they can kind of assess that. But not only are the stakes high for the students, the stakes are high for the teachers, because their evaluation is based upon the growth from one year to the next. And so you're going to have to have some measure. And we already know that the reading 3D takes too much time. I mean, it absolutely takes too much time. But we're not in a position to say we're not going to do it. But there are a lot of assessment instruments out there. The value of having one countywide is your apples and apples. That's, that's for sure. If you don't have that, it's difficult to determine on a countywide basis. But it's all wrapped up, and you look at the state plan, you look at the district plan, and then you go about measuring those kinds of things. I mean, we could get rid of A's Web at the end of the year and throw it out the window. It may be free next year, I don't know. It may be the best thing, it may be the worst thing. But we're going to have to have some kind of assessment along the way in order to keep things moving and to keep parents informed and those kinds of things. Because the subjective ratings that teachers are able to give before, what requirements of law anymore, because they have to have regular data to do it. So it's an ongoing process, it's never something that stops. And, you know, should the board choose to say there'd be no A's Web administered in the county, and that I won't be here, but I can relatively assure you, it wouldn't be done. But that doesn't mean that the federal government is not going to require you to have some measure, uh, middle, beginning, and end, and that's, uh, as far as I'm saying, that's all I have to say about that.
I have one question, I know we should have got it off the floor. I, I don't, Mr. Want you to say, um, the integrity of each school major, all decisions for the school, um, that they like talking about spring, that's what they're talking about, they make their own decision. I guess, well, I can say, what would change a whole disparate book next month? And we'll be looking for more next month, what, what would change?
They say they're, they're, they would have their dad...
And that's, that's why, the reason I wanted to go, that I say, go ahead and make a motion for this group to go ahead and be approved, does nothing change. I mean, if we're, if we're saying that the school has the, they're the spokesperson for this, and that's what they put in place, surely they will not want to turn all those down, say, go ahead, you're a school group, they don't.
And you'll see difference if the custom school said, well, we're not really doing any, anything, so we're going to put these all in there. Some schools said, well, we're doing pretty good in this, so we're going to focus on the student career. And someone just said, well, we can't, we don't have time, we don't have time to do, to wait, to do this later. We need to really focus on the whole picture right now. And so they, one of the things they noticed was, from beginning of the year through the end of the year, is their reading assessment is their TRC right now. And so the conversation's been, what can we do instructionally to get these kids up? And they, they realized it's right, they have to have it right every day, because they're not that TRC company. But that was, that was a conversation that they came out with, and, and we've been working with the principals and the sister principals, to show them better ways to use this data. We met, um, last week, and we've been collaborating with the sister principals, and we went through all the different data cards, talking about the major reports, talking to, look at what the major mean, where it's extremely important, it's the last time success for a child, and that's, those children are not going to talk about it, because that's kind of what the assessment's saying, that's the time of year when that's the prime time for those children to know that, in order to be ready to read something next time. So, um, it, you know, it's a learning process for all of us, because we've never used it, we've had it for years, we have never used it the way we're using it this year.
But it's okay for each school to place their own decision.
Because they're picking out what they want to improve.
Right. What instrument they want to use.
Well, we, but, most of the schools have used the same instrument. We have two schools that have used something different. We've got, and they're not presented tonight, Highlands is one, and maybe Middle is another. They use some different measures. But that's because they, as a team, have chosen to do that. So probably by waiting to see that, like Mr. Schill said, it's not going to change the plan of, they have tonight. Simply because they've already done their mid-year measure, so it doesn't make sense to change right now and do a different assessment in getting into your measure that's not going to mean anything. Now, if, you know, next year, when we get the, the state test results back, we might want to look at this and do something different. But right now, it's, this is what they chose to do. So I'm not sure that anything's going to change in what you see tonight, unless you see something as a board that you, um, don't mind or don't agree with.
What, what areas do they still, you still have five areas you have climbing?
No, we don't anymore.
Uh-huh, absolutely.
They just look at the top two or three areas that they feel, um, are keeping their students in doing successful.
Okay. I'm sorry for my motion.
Yes.
So it don't matter what we say, doesn't matter?
No, it doesn't have to. If you, as a board, if you say, we don't like this plan because...
We don't know, I don't know enough about it, too. I hadn't dug into it, maybe I should have, but I don't want to dig into it enough.
That's fine.
Right. Before we do it next year to where we can change. Now, if I say yes to this tonight, well, we're going to be presented the fact that we're going to wait till it's not next year, and all of a sudden, such a gun to us, we say, we've already owned this, so we can't change it now.
And you're not, you're not approving an assessment engine. You're not approving to keep using A's Web or to, it is assessment engine, but you're approving that the data they have right now shows a weakness, and they've got a plan to try to improve. Now, if you say next year, A's Web is secret, and I think we should be using it, that's not anything to do with what you're doing right now. And if you want to relook at that and say, at the district, we're not going to use A's Web, the people who have used it are going to have to come back and change those plans for next year, because they're going to have new reading and post data. But what you're doing right now is only saying, in looking at these plans, we see the schools in the districts and areas they need improving in, and have a good solid plan for making it a positive grade.
Which I agree with, absolutely, I totally understand what you're saying. But like when Jim first took this, it's a lot of information. And we, when we first started reading this, we were going to look at it and come back to this next month. It's not, we're not going to say to them, okay, you've got to stop something next year. But we were just trying to take all this information in, and, and to be honest with you, I haven't taken all of it in yet. So we weren't saying that, that when you fix this, you're going to say, okay, you can do this, stop it middle of the year, it doesn't matter, because your data is totally worthless then. It means nothing to you or nobody else to change it mid-year. But, you know, when Jim started the conversation, and I agree with him, we were just all going to take this information, and maybe next month, we might would say, okay, we agree with this, but we have questions, question here, and that's the time to use a question answer. I don't think any others want to make it.
Change now.
Change now, or make it harder. It's just a matter of taking this information in and asking questions while it's on the board. And that's how, I think that's just started the conversation.
That's what the board, we're going to have to...
So, I would just ask you, let us have, have in mind, when he was first arguing, we have no problem, we're not going to try to change something this year, we're not, we do our volunteer, or take their time to improve each of our school group, or make it a part of, I know, but we're not part of it.
Well, here's where we're at, guys. We have had discussions, however, we do have a motion to second on the floor right now. So unless it's a party that made those want to withdraw, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ed, draw it, then we need to move forward with a vote at this time, is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm assuming the business children's motion's still in back?
Yeah. And the reason for it is, I don't, I don't have the expertise to critique this. The school improvement team at the school, so I have to trust that they're doing the right thing. Me personally, I have faith in you to do the right thing. And that's, when I read, when I took this information here, the, the all percentages and stuff, I just appreciate what you're doing. Keep working on it. I don't have anything to tell you to do different. I don't have that expertise. And I don't know, for me personally, this time next month, I just look at you again, I'd look at the floor, once that comes out. But I don't have, I'm not an expertise at this time. So I, I think, I, I'll keep my motion on the floor.
I have a motion to second. So this time we'll go just a little bit slower than normal, as I was saying, in terms of the kids, too. So, uh, all those in favor of approving the submitted school improvement plans of everybody, please sit above and say aye. All of opposed?
Opposed.
Which puts back to the board. And I'm, I asked a question beginning on, like Mr. Schill. I think the fact that you've included the school system, school and business schools, they have the right to change among themselves, the fact we can look at it a year from now is not working. And I also approve, I'm okay for approval of the funds submitted.
Well, we don't want it a year, how we want to approve.
And we don't have four to five years, that's the only thing, they'll, they'll be looking at the person next year when we ask the question. Moving on, uh, to buildings and grounds, now I have a school security system, Dr. Duncan.
Oh, a business in Anahalo, um, a couple of days ago, and I've been up there two or three different times, listed Mr. Bryan, and obviously, he's got a lot of needs there in terms of some potential safety issues. We do have, Zed, as we'll think you might have gotten some copies, we do have a meeting scheduled, Duke Power, talking about some outside lighting. But, uh, immediately, they need some cameras inside the gymnasium, uh, two cameras inside the gymnasium would go a long ways toward their full plan, which is a, um, pretty expensive plan. would go a long ways toward their full plan, which is a pretty expensive plan, about a twenty thousand dollar plan overall. But it's something we can do now, we can put those cameras up, they can be operational and just, you know, I think in just a matter of days, really, it's cool.
They can get the cameras and get this call, we probably.
Right. And we, it's not an exorbitant amount, there are a lot of needs, but this is an immediate need. I think they would rectify some situations there. So my recommendation is that we take it out of Cartoon J's sale account and approve thirty-eight hundred dollars for three cameras inside the gymnasium.
I have a motion to approve Dr. Duncan's recommendations before the association of cameras at this point in time, maybe other needs, kind of course, like this is before. So have a motion second. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor, and it's also especially coming out of our Cartoon J's school funds, which is kind of our current capital outlay, correct, Dr. Duncan?
That's correct.
So if that, any other discussion? All in favor, so if I say an aye. Being focused, so moved.
I can tell them that you put that execution in the morning and we're going to move in on that.
Next, our Ms. Cook, fund redistribution. FHS.
I have a one for Frankston High School, and it's just a little over six hundred and sixty-six dollars, and it was ideal that general athletics covered into a little varsity cheerleading fundraiser account, the rest I'm going to, I can back that.
Any questions? Here, motion to approve, second. Have a motion, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Budget amendments, then, Melissa, second. Budget amendments, let's just take both of those at the same time that are on the floor, we both have state and federal.
And the person in state, we have had about eighty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars increases in state allotment, twenty-four thousand of that being the classroom teachers, eight hundred seventy-five subpay, twenty-four thousand. Well, we actually did a waiver from academically gifted to O one O, and I do those as a means to pay for a person who's not necessarily certified in an academic gift. So that's just a wash that we're having to do that payment.
Is that, is that first work?
Yes, yes. Twenty-eight thousand in transportation, another twenty-nine thousand dollars coming through exceptional children's home that Paula had requested and were actually receiving. And then eighteen hundred dollars in eighty-five, which is the reading free day issue that the state pays them. The federal is just a, actually, all of all this federal one is Title I. Carol and I sat down and tried to clean up Title I a little bit, see where we were at. And she's agreed to move some of each individual school, maybe they wanted to switch, turn her money to school supplies or vice versa, and we agreed to do that. So all that is to clean that up.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Not very motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion to say all in favor, if I say aye. So moved. Resolution, authorize disposition of surplus of personal property, and?
This is a Mount Team ninety-nine Ford station wagon that had an unfortunate incident a couple weeks ago. And we are declaring it surplus, it's actually taken today to receive. We will receive a check from the insurance company and then we also dispose of it together a little bit, make sure it's wrapped.
A motion to approve for resolution?
So moved.
And motion second. And motion second, all in favor, if I say aye. And get focused. Port of education information, is anything changed from that, Dr. Duncan? I don't see anything on there, is that correct? And anything on superintendent information?
No, sir, keep in touch with the legislature, I don't see any movement right now on the bill related to that name of school. The governor's supposed to submit his budget, maybe this week, so we might have some idea of the direction that we might put the state budget. Haven't used any funds or dollars to visit the legislature. If you want, that'd be wasting taxpayers' money for me to go down there and do anything. But if I was called on the desk by the head of the LA project government, Mr. Henning and I talked briefly before the meeting, it was a toss, stepped out of that. But I feel like we're moving ahead on the Q left, watching up here, keeping dotting I's and crossing T's and finding ways to, but nothing leads me to believe that we're not on, on time and on target. Mr. Judd, have you heard anything, whether the bids have been led on that project or not?
The bids have led, we've had a number of contracts come through and do a number of different things, looking at new, like lots here, there, do universal lighting, all those kinds of things. I believe that the hallway is forward and the hallway ceiling is close to the elevator spring break, so that the whole floor, the whole way down that hallway, we can be down to the front. We'll do that over spring break and also see if we have to start running audios, not a federal kind of, we'll run them down the hall, get all the old stuff out of there so that they can get, at the start of the year on some of the, we've been able to figure out a plan to get that main end teacher, teachers on the far end, about a week earlier when they talked before, so we'll get some additional feet, hopefully done by now.
Good, I, I think that's good and just, because we call here on a regular basis and you are to keep the community informed and especially if they come in and say, well, you took up all the floor. Well, yes, we're going to get a new one that night some point. So we don't go of any financial snags or anything concerning the way that project has been moving forward, so.
Why are they working on some?
I think so. Yeah. That's all I have.
Anything else before we intend motion going to closed session? If not, Mr. Henning, if you would please read the reasons for our.
This is the purpose of the closed session, including GS four forty-three dash sixteen, and these six to consider the qualifications, accomplishments, character, conditions, and any information. And individual applications.
Very motion to go into detective session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? If it will be taken place, and there may be something coming out from now, it's a special question. Yes.